All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is the Wednesday, May 21st, 2025 Men's Select Board Meeting. This meeting is being recorded. There are, we have four select board members here. A person, Mike Goddard, is not here. There is no one online, so. And if you could please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a few people online. So we have two different things. The Hooning is a hearing scheduled, but several hearings. So 6:35, 6:40, and 6:45.
Yeah, and we've got no National Grid representatives here. And we just have the description that's in the hearing. But without, you know, I don't want to presume that none of you have any questions. So Fly wrote two motions to continue it to June 4th. And we can assure National Grid not be here to answer any questions.
So we have a fair amount on the agenda tonight. And the first thing on here is the reorganization vote. So I was reelected to the board.
Congratulations.
Unopposed, but you know, I think there were a couple of write-ins. But it is still in our policies and procedures to reorganize after the election. So I did want to have a moment to like discuss a little bit about the process because we have not had much opportunity to discuss the process as a board. We all collaborated to some extent on the policies and procedures. And I know different boards over, you know, previously had had, you know, when it was a three-member board, I think there was the norm was to rotate the members. And but I thought it would be useful for us to have a little bit of a conversation, discussion in open meeting about this. And I will say that I am, I've enjoyed being chair. It was a great opportunity. I am in favor of someone else taking the role of chair in the coming year. I'm open to being chair again if, if the need arises. And I hope to have the opportunity to be chair again in the future. But I'm in favor of someone else taking the reins and rotating. So my first choice would be for the vice chair to be considered. I have reason to believe that he is not able to do that. But anyhow, I just wanted to put it out there that I would be happy to be chair again in the future, willing to be chair now, but also would like to see another board member be chair because I think it would be good for us as an organization. I think we're a very collaborative board. I think that we, we make decisions jointly. So I wanted to put it out there. And I guess I wanted to open it up to other board members.
Yeah, so first off, I do want to confirm that I am, I don't think I would be able to give the chair position the time it needs with my schedule. So that's, that's my position. So I'd be happy to do that in the future, but this time probably not. Then the other, the other thing that I wanted to state about the policies and procedures is that there are exemptions for policies and procedures like this. This is basically saying, you know, you reorganize immediately after the meeting, unless there's a reason that you shouldn't. And considering that there is someone not here, I think personally, I, I will be in favor of waiting till we had full attendance to take this vote personally. But that's up to everyone.
Do we know what, would anybody know what Mike's feeling or intention is on this?
I spoke with him right after he finished a food tour in Italy. So you joked, I was at the MECC dispatch meeting earlier today. And we joked, if you don't show up to a meeting, you get nominated for the subcommittee, to chair the subcommittee on, you know, whatever, your punishment for not being here. So I spoke with him. He's not here to accept the nomination, but he said if, if there's not, he'd be willing to do it and be chair if, if that was the will of the board nominate. He would take it, but gladly allow someone else in this position.
So I'll, I'll put my name out for chair. I don't disagree with postponing for a full vote. I do think we need to put some more detail into the policy eventually this year.
Sure.
Maybe something like, you know, the two, I have no problem with the limit we put on two, or I wouldn't have, you know, voted for those policies. But a non-contiguous two would force you to not have to make that decision to stay in. You're, you know, those two years and would force the rotation. So just to, to solve that problem for the current, you know, attending chair. You know, a non-contiguous two, but for an exception. There are five of us, so it just feels like, you know, in this situation, if, if Mike and I are both willing to do it, that's two out of five. And so you still always have that. It's something to talk about, I guess.
Are you in your, is this, have you, are we starting your third year?
I'm starting my third year.
What's your last year? Because traditionally it was, you were in your last year and you would be the chair in your last year.
Oh, so I'm traditionally offering my last year.
I, I lost track of who was which year.
So Mike and I, this would be Mike and I's year.
Mike, okay, all right.
So he, he's in his third year now?
Of this cycle.
Of this first.
You and I are starting our second year, right?
Starting over, yeah. Fresh start.
Yeah, Mike Goddard and Jason Cooter are up for election next match. And then Mike and Raleigh and Brad Chanel.
Are we, are we doing, you're in chair and then vice chair in that order? Because I would, I would say to just, I would nominate a slate of Jason Cooter for chair and Mike Goddard for vice chair. It doesn't require a second, doesn't require something. So that will be my nomination of a slate, chair and vice chair.
Right, so discussion?
I don't think the policy says anything about majority or it has to vote.
Okay. And I know it, it sounds like we have confirmation that Mike Goddard is open to such a nomination, so.
Mike and I work together. It's our, not, it's our election year, you know, we might be a good pair.
Okay, and it further?
I will, I would say that the role of the chair has a lot of, you know, it's defining policies and it has a lot of interaction with me outside of meetings.
And I'm like, take back.
Because I'm off for 10 minutes this week and I already have got my case. But it's, you know, it's, you all have one vote. You're all the same, you know, it's first among equal sort of thing. Or it's not an executive position.
There's occasional signing.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so. What else? Okay.
A lot of sign.
There is some signing. But I mean, I know, like, I do, I do appreciate, appreciate the way this board does work together. And so I don't feel like I'm in any way really pushing my voice by not being chair. And in fact, you know, there may be ways that I can, you know, participate more in other, in other areas. So yeah, I do, there is a way which I wish I could go back in time and re-chair last year, but without all of the tumultuous events with staffing and.
I was thinking about that luxury this year.
Yeah, what's that?
I was thinking about that luxury this year, about having to deal with all that.
I, yeah, it was, yeah, it was an adventurous year.
Hard to believe it's all been the way.
I know, well, that's the thing.
Well, look what amazing job you did, and here we are.
Oh, well, thank you. I, I mean, I have, I have enjoyed it. So anyhow, I think, any other discussion, bring it to a vote then? All, so the, the motion is for Jason Cooter as chair and Mike Goddard as vice chair. And it doesn't need a second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mike Goddard is not here to speak, so right. So congratulations, Jason. You are a new chair, so. The gavel went last time, but we want to switch places.
I don't know, is that we?
We said, yes, that's what it says. So here, I'm gonna, I'll take mine.
One further comment about the contiguous chair. The reason. It was allowed sequentially is in terms of turmoil to have a continuous chair. If there's like some stuff going on.
Like a COVID.
And you don't want a reorganization in the middle of it.
Which is what happened previously.
Yeah, okay, I forgot mine.
We were in the middle of getting new administrative.
Exactly. Don't pile on the chain. I think that worked out well, so. Oh, you just took that. I just swapped them.
Right, so where?
See you later, Mike.
Is there one that sits vice chair?
No.
Oh, okay. This must be riveting to watch for those of you. We'll rotate, I guess this can be Mike Goddard.
So do we want to jump forward to the public hearing then?
Yeah, the 6:35 and the 6:40, we can do both.
So without anybody in the National Grid, we're just postponing until they show up.
So I talked with Karis about, the town council, about continuing hearings at a previous, for a previous hearing. And she said the chair can declare that the hearing is continued until either a date certain or until the next appropriate date. So we don't have to open, we don't have to continue with those. The chair can just declare that the public hearing has been continued until such a time. My recommendation would be June 4th, which is the next available meeting. And then we'll make sure National Grid is here to discuss them.
All right, well, I declare continuation of a public hearing that was to start at 6:35 to our next meeting, which is June 4th, 2025.
We can do the same for the 6:40.
And I would also continue the 6:40 public hearing to 6:40 on June 4th, 2025, which is our next meeting.
And then the, the third one? Should say 6:45.
Yeah, and I would continue the 6:45 public hearing to 6:45 on June 4th, 2025, so that National Grid would be here to answer our questions.
Can I suggest we send them a message?
We, yeah, we have.
We're gonna keep continuing this until they send somebody, so.
And we don't need to wait until 6:45 for that one?
I was looking at the clock on the wall. All right, I'll keep track, I'll keep an eye on 6:43 and you can redo it.
So we'll hop back to the start of the agenda.
Did we do citizens' statements?
We did not.
And petitions, all right. Well, then we would hear from our audience or online. And seeing no hands, I would go to the correspondence number four, which is the, from Representative Murray.
So, support members, Select Board and FinCom voted to send a letter of support increasing Chapter 78 minimum to $150 per people and fully reimbursing regional transportation costs. And so we sent it to Representative Murray and Senator Fadman. We got a letter back from Representative Murray. He is a co-sponsor of the bill to bring the $150 minimum. And then there, he is a co-sponsor of an amendment to increase the regional school transportation line item by $5 million. It is silent on what that does to more terms of percentage of reimbursement, but it is an increase on the original. So that's the only response we've gotten. And Representative Murray is sympathetic to the cost.
That's great. So he didn't, he, we don't know what, what full reimbursement would represent the number?
Yeah, we can, I don't know right now because it's, it's trailing by a year. So I, I don't have all the data from every other regional school district. We have hovered, I shouldn't say hovered, we have ranged between the high 70s and the mid 90s in terms of percentage of reimbursement. In the lean years in 2016, 2017, reimbursement was quite low. But it's been as high as the high 80s and mid 90s the last few years.
I was gonna say, I mean, those are good numbers because I remember when it was, I want to say it was something like 60% or some, some number, you know?
Yeah, in our letter, I do look back to like 2017 and I went into the mid, to look at.
Do you know what the latest status is on the, on the budget?
So the, the Senate, so our cherry sheet is really, really similar. We don't get much in terms of unrestricted general government aid. So $525,000, I think it is, I'll pull it up now. So the Senate budget has total local government aid to us $619,000. We present the budget based upon the governor's budget, which had $617,000. So not, not going to change us what. What we're really looking at is the regional schools and what, what that one's doing.
Just curious.
So from the governor's budget to the Senate proposal, Menden Upton is up $110,000. So just to remind everyone, the governor presents H1, the House 1, then the House presents their budget, the Senate presents their budget. Those two things happen totally independently of each other. And then the House and Senate get together for a conference committee. And then they send a final budget to the, to the governor. Massachusetts has been among the last states in the nation to pass a budget relative to the service this year, something like missing eight out of the last 10 years. So we'll see if we actually get signed at any point.
Julie, how are you?
Yeah, that's from Representative Murray.
So 6:45 is coming past, so continue that public meeting. Until, all right, public hearing until June 4th. All right, meeting minutes. Everybody had a chance to review and submit their meeting minute changes for December, January, and February? So I'd be looking for a motion?
They're still somewhat inconsistent in the format of how they start, but I think they're much improved.
So three of them were only available in PDF. And rather than try to retype the whole thing, we have had discussions on going forward, what the format should be. But it seemed.
As opposed to Word, you mean? So they couldn't edit it?
Right, it was.
Like an image format?
I'm not sure of the genesis of it, but the only available one to me right now was one in PDF. So when we converted it over to Word, it, it, the juice didn't seem worth the squeeze to like spend my time doing that. So we've had a conversation about what they should look like going forward. And we're still, you know, two or three months behind. So there will be some inconsistencies on the backlog of stuff. But going forward, the goal is to have a very consistent meeting in a format.
Okay, thank you.
Then I would make a motion to approve the minutes at 12:18, 1:15, 1:29, and 2:19, 2025, as presented. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those against?
Mr. Chair, we have a citizen that, I don't know if she's here for, for a hearing or, we might want to ask what her.
Aye.
So we don't make a way that it's not necessary.
What can we do for you today?
I thought there was gonna be a hearing on moving telephone calls.
There is, but National Grid, and I didn't send a representative, so we chose to continue those hearings. But we'll hear your, you know.
No, I just want to hear what they.
Us too.
We actually asked just before you walked in, Julie, to send them a letter to let them know we will continue, we will continue these hearings. Until somebody.
Yeah, until someone shows up. So our next meeting would be June 4th, and we hope to have them here for that. So we can ask them, yeah, where they're putting them and what their plans are.
Okay, same plan.
Same time, same place, June 4th.
All right.
Thank you so much. Community events?
So the Cultural Council is having the scavenger hunt this Saturday, 31st. First, first annual, I believe.
It's a week from Saturday.
Week from Saturday, sorry, I'm wishing I was there. So we're excited about that. Friends, Men, and Elders, their Progressive Yard Sale, a week from then, June 7th, with a rain date the following Sunday on June 8th. I got an email earlier today from Mark Pacino from, you know, Lyons, the toll road that they were planning, did not occur because of either some weather and some staffing issues, a combination of some stuff, some volunteer issues. So they have moved it, consultation with Chief Kersey, Chief Kersey, to Saturday, the 31st as well. And then a rain date of June 7th. So busy couple of weekends.
So the, the Cultural Council Scavenger Hunt was also moved from last Saturday. So this is the, the rain date, so hopefully it will not rain.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to rain this weekend, right? The next three days.
It's a nor'easter, a spring nor'easter for tomorrow, cloudy on Friday.
It will get some snow.
North or main, like.
Supposed to be 70, I think, from Saturday, right?
It's Sunday and Monday, it's gonna get warmer. The rain should be nice.
Because Memorial Day, that's right.
Yeah, Sunday and Monday.
All right, so let's go on to number 10. Talk about the parade permit for the American Legion Roger L. Wood Post Number 355. They would like to hold a parade like we normally do on May 26th, which is Monday. I assume the details are that they want to start at the Alarm Shop. Does anybody know the time?
Yes.
Is it 8:00 AM?
The muster, muster is at 7:30.
Right, muster at 7:30, kickoff at 8:00. So while he gets whatever he's getting, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the.
Yeah, I'm, I'd look to approve the permit for the American Legion War and Lit Parade for May 26th, May 25th, 25th. Second.
Discussion?
Are you, is everyone gonna be there?
I plan on attending.
I would be there as well.
I would, I plan on being there as well.
Yeah, it's gonna be a nice day and.
So I guess.
Make, take a nice walk around the community.
What time?
I'm 90% sure at 7:30 we have to be there.
Yeah, can I just suggest that, Jeremy, can you just mention to the, to the, to the police chief, or, you know, usually they have their four-wheeler parade. But if we want to get here and park here in the parking lot, maybe they can, I mean, leave the walk or get a ride down to the start of the parade. Just so that we know, because with the parking, the way there's not, we can park here and worry about it. We can do the same thing we've done previous years. I'm, I'm looking at the lane because usually it's one by. My wife had to pick us up.
Yeah, and usually I just take whoever gives me a ride, so.
We have, my wife had knee surgery, so she's probably not gonna come.
Okay, all right, she is not available for chauffeuring.
Come by and pick you up and park here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It does start at 8:00.
All right, well, I'll see you guys down there on 7:30. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Forgot I had to say aye. All right, number 11, which is vote on the town administrator authority over probationary employees.
So this is one of those things where I'm just kind of looking to codify something that we've been doing for a long time anyway. So when the Select Board is the appointing authority for everybody, which means you're also the, I'm appointing, I don't know, you can terminate folks. And when we have someone in the probationary period, and that varies based upon their contracts, their union or non-union contracts, but it's either six months or a year. To go through a full termination is to post an executive session, give them 48 hours notice. They're able to waive the executive session, can come into open session. It, it gets a little cumbersome and muddied. And usually for terminating someone in the probationary period is for performance or attendance related issues or for, you know, some sort of mitigating circumstance where they can no longer perform their, their job as required. And to have that public back and forth between probationary employee and the Select Board, it can, can sometimes get ugly. So I have terminated folks in the probationary period who couldn't, failed their background checks or something like that. And previous administration and when there was interims, also have terminated employees within, within the probationary period. I think it, it makes it a little bit more seamless. But I, I was uncomfortable having that conversation at all with folks without an express vote saying I can do that.
Where, so say, say we take this vote, is it gonna be documented somewhere or is it gonna live somewhere?
Yeah, so I would get it to legal, I would keep it in my, I put it in HR.
Whose policy is it?
Whose policy?
Yeah.
Exactly, what document does it?
Is it, is that a Select Board policy as we delegate power? Or is it a town administrator policy as you do your administrative duties that we haven't yet codified, but nonetheless?
So my, my intent would be to have there be a town administrator by law and this be expressed in it.
Yes.
So.
So it's like a separate.
But right, but right now, we're the appointing authority. And there's many, there's multiple places within, based on past practice, if not in policy, that we have delegated authority to the town administrator. And then a good example, I had this discussion with the previous town administrator, was that, you know, we are the appointing authority of the Chief of Police. But in practice, the Chief of Police answers to the town administrator on a daily basis, right? If there's an issue, although we are the appointing authority. In the, in the same way, when somebody's appointed on a probationary basis, you know, that, that's part of the daily routine. So it's been delegated to the town administrator. But I do agree that we should put it, I mean, the meeting notes would certainly be the place to start. But I think it should be in both, my opinion, it should be in both the, you know, hard policies, the Select Board policies, and whatever government document you have as the town administrator should be in there. That's not only, you know, that's not only, you know, that's the expectation for you to do that. Rather than letting it bounce on until our next meeting. If there's an issue and it's clear they're probationary, why prolong it ever? Give them the opportunity to exercise that authority and just do it. So we can actually backfill with somebody else and get started with that.
Yeah, there's, you said where, kind of where would it live? So this board took a vote to have the town administrator appoint at the, you know, Recommendation on Fire Chief on call.
Yeah, exactly.
So I have that printed out in, in a folder kind of by itself at my desk, so.
It's like surviving past us and you if we don't get to the bylaw portion during our administration. Yeah, how does that authority continue?
So if, until it's in bylaw, should there be an expiration date or should it just be open ended? Is it something that we should do it on every year?
Well, I think it does expire to be changed, but why would we change it?
Yeah, no, I, I have no, let me be clear, I have no issue with this.
I, I would only be if the town administrator got out of control with firing somehow. But at that point, don't we still have power over, sorry, firing?
Yeah, so I mean, at that point, either you revoke the policy at the next meeting or you vote in the affirmative.
And you're not planning on converting everybody to a provisional in order to fire them, so, right.
Be in the personnel policy somewhere as well?
Yeah.
Is Jen, is Jen?
Jen's online, it looks like.
And this is something that Jen and I have talked about before as well.
I think it makes sense.
Jen, would you like to talk? I saw you flick on and off real quick.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, it'll definitely be in the personnel policy that we are working to update. It's a very slow process because it takes a lot of time to go policy by policy. But we'll definitely put it in there. And in terms of probationary employees, I mean, our union contracts do state in there, you know, the probationary period. And I think for our non-union employees, to have it in the personnel policy will be very helpful as well.
And, you know, if you want to be crystal clear over it because of the like strong chief status, you can say non-public safety employees to give. Because there's no world in which I would reach into the police and fire operations. To give, because there's no world in which I would reach into the police and fire operations and say, you know, discontinue. I think that should still live with the chief. But that's.
All right, well, then I'd be looking for a motion on number 11.
I move that the town administrator be granted authority to terminate probationary employees of non-public safety in their probationary period.
Second.
Discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All those against? Passes unanimously. All right, number 12, which is a vote on the letter of support for the One Stop Grant for the Water Supply System.
Yeah, so I don't know that this needed a vote, but I didn't want to present you with a letter and say, you know, what is this? Wanted to give you the update. So we've used a number of funding sources to fund our water system supply project with, with our outside firm. We've used ARPA money, we've used an earmark to begin, a state earmark to begin with, and then I've used Housing Choice Grant. And now we're running for the second time for a One Stop for Growth for the next iteration of the water supply program. At some point, I'd like to get our consultants in here and give a presentation to the board, especially after the, I gave a brief update, but especially after the prolonged pumping tests in the fall about how great the results were about water quality and water volume. So this is, this is for our next part of the system where we do a little bit more of how do we get this thing built and paid for is, is really the next part. I don't know if said at a public meeting, but I said as a member too, that Hopedale is interested in the regional water district. So that would, that would be great, and they need supply and we need infrastructure. So if we can, we can merge that into lots, lots of negotiations before that comes to fruition. And then lots of modeling before we get there. So I forget the number, I think it's in the $400,000 range of our grant application. I've already signed a similar letter. This was written largely by our town planner, Assistant Town Planner and, and Water Nook, our consultant.
Can be any discussions with Mitch, Robert?
And Tim, Tim Watson.
And Stuart.
Yeah, so they reached out to me, I went over there. I think there's a lot of, a lot of legs to the idea. What I think will be the biggest hurdle is that this is not Mendon selling water to Hopedale, and this is not Hopedale processing Mendon's water. This is a regional water district in which we are equal partners and, you know.
Equal partners, but not necessarily transferring equal resources back and forth.
So it will come down to how do we, how do we set up the partnership?
But the rest of it was, we had talked about it numerous times about the, their sewer plant, which hand, of course, is under a lot of, you know, the amount of.
Right, just over 16.
And, you know, obviously that would have been a fair bit of money, and several things. And the issue with it is, you know, there's, they have plenty of capacity when there's not a lot of rain, the system is leaky, meaning that a lot of people, I think, are tied into it for that slow water and things.
It's called inflow and infiltration, so a lot of times if you, yeah, exactly what you're talking about, they're ended up processing just a lot of surface water.
About some pumps and whatever. There was, at different times here has been, you know, a willingness, and with their recent, you know, override issues and desiccations and everybody's feeling a crunch. This is just a piece of regionalization, and, you know, we've been working for years trying to get sewer as well along 16. Maybe not until 40 because it's not going to down there, but up here, you know, even if it was, I mean, I would love to deal with everything from around the, the lake, which has, they have the tight tanks, they have issues there, and all of that commercial, just commercially. And that particular watershed region, if we could get that as part of this. And there is, it's a real possibility, and this, I'm just, obviously I'm talking about it because I'm kind of excited that you actually discussed it with him. And there was actually some willingness. And I have had conversations with both mentioned, Tim Watson, a few years ago.
Improving the Nipman Lake quality, that would be high on the list, definitely.
So a big hurdle for us is the Route 16 DOT project, and that will have a non-disturbance clause. So, you know, once they put it down, we can't dig it up 18 months later to put a water main in. So this, even if it's ready to go and everybody's ready to sign or has signed, the actual placing of the infrastructure may have to wait out a non-disturbance period for DOT.
How many years is that?
Typically, it's five. I haven't, I don't know specifically on this one, I'm talking with Water.
Luckily, there's a lot of land over there, right?
Depending on what's going on, I mean, how are you really surprised if DOT actually is starting in the state?
They were supposed to start next year.
They're, they're going to start this fall, I have a piece of my town administrator report, but it, while we're talking about it. So they did their first temporary easement. They sent us notice. Tiny strip of land on 36 and 38 Milford Street. So construction's still slated to begin in the fall of 2025. They told me they were bidding in May, so I think they're up to file the sub bids right now, I saw on the project website. So it's nearly $25 million. It was first reviewed by DOT Project Committee in February of 2016, so this is a long time coming. And so it goes, amended, it goes from on Route 16 from Taft Ave down to the Hopedale Town Line. And there's new signals at Hartford Avenue West and Maple Street, and then improved signals at North Ave. So they're gonna, they're gonna get started autumn 2025, so the project.
Okay.
You're going to see.
They've already spent a few million on design, so I hope they.
So I'd be looking for a, a motion to create a, a letter, well, to sign a letter of support for the One Stop Group.
So great.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right. Reapportment, reappointments for expiring terms, so are these all of the positions that are expiring, regardless of whether or not that person is presumed to be submitting for the same position again? Okay, because that was something I, I believe the town clerk might have talked about with you. I talked about it with her the, I don't know, two, two, two Tuesdays ago. So, all right, I was just checking on that.
Yeah, so the, the idea would be, I think, I haven't been here for a lot, but I think historically, if folks' term was expiring, they wanted, they said, I want to be reappointed, the board reappointed them. What this would do, you know, I put the appointment policy in here right in front of the, the list in the packet, is it would post all of the vacancies that come July 1. And then incumbents are welcome and invited to, you know, give their letter of interest to say, I would like to be reappointed. But it would give members of the public who aren't currently on the committee availability to say, I am also interested in being on this committee.
Because there's no election, official election for these positions, so I don't want to exclude people.
What's the recheck? So how's the recheck?
So we have our handy-dandy Technicup system, which I was planning to use this, say, hey, look at our vacancies. We've got a couple of flyers around here, around Town Hall. But once they're up for long enough, they, you know, become part of the furniture, so it's big, people don't register them. We'll do some outreach on Facebook, some word of mouth, looking for you all to, to point people to our website too. We don't have a, I lamented the fact to Jason recently that we don't have a, a daily or weekly newspaper to like keep. When I was at the Southern Proco, it was like at, you know, city council meetings, and it was, it was in the forefront of the dialogue about what was going on in municipal government. So use the, use the channels we have, I guess.
We've talked about newsletters here in the past, one, one time, but yeah, the problem is having resources to create them.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I had said this to Elena recently, that kind of, you know, stricken from a fire hose when I started here, but like the easy, the easier, easier parts of the job are getting easier, like the, you know, the routine and the weekly stuff, I feel like I have a better handle on. So I feel like I'm building a little bit of capacity to do the additive things. So I'm gonna, I'm going to have aims for a quarterly newsletter, and how we distribute that, we'll see, you know. Doesn't cost that much to send it to everybody, so maybe we'll send a couple up.
So I assume you're gonna also recheck with your colleagues.
Sure, so previously, so the previous situation was this lets you go from the town clerk to the executive assistant, and send out a letter, hey, do you want to be reappointed? We're gonna tweak that a little bit and reflect what we're talking, you're talking about here and, and the approach about a more competitive process, inviting a more competitive process. So I don't have the wording down yet, but yeah, everyone will.
But these are for all different lengths of time, or are they all three?
They're all three-year terms.
Okay.
Brenda pointed out to me that on the website, it's listed as the Town Forest Committee has a expired position, and I think an expired one coming up as well, so I'm gonna check with the town clerk. I think it wasn't on here because I think the committee's largely defunct, doesn't meet, so perhaps it didn't.
Although there's, the reason I ask is the number front wants to be.
I saw that.
So I think.
Get it going.
Yeah, exactly, so trying to get all these, these things up and running.
So I'm, so I'll check with the town clerk and just make sure we're doing the right number of positions or whatever, but on June 4th, I'll come back with the Town Forest one, so here's.
All right, well, now I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to most of the following community agencies to transfer to July 1st, November 5th. Agriculture Commission, one position. Capital Planning Commission, one position. Union Reservation Committee, two positions. Conservation Commission, two positions. Council on Labor, two positions. Cultural Council, one position. Economic Development Committee, one position. Election Wardens, two positions. Finance Committee, two positions. Historic District Commission, three positions. Historic Commission, two positions. Land Use Committee, four positions. Tax Agent, one position. Zoning Board, one position. And one HOCS, one position.
Second.
Second. No, no, I just had a question. So I guess when there's discussion.
Discussion?
So Land Use Committee, I'm surprised that it's four positions, that they, they all expire at the same time. That is, they do expire all at the same time.
I think there were people appointed whenever it was first, and rather than they did stagger them, they just did them all, and they just continued to.
So I will, I will ask the town clerk, should we stagger the appointments?
That's what I want.
And two, two further notes from the Capital Planning Commission, there's one vacancy, there's one term expiring on 6/30. The commission that met for the first time yesterday and was recently appointed, but we staggered.
Do they want to be reappointed?
He took minutes, so. So, but that was because we had to stagger them, and someone had to expire, so I imagine I want to be re. But there are two vacancies, a five-person committee, and there are two vacancies that, you know, are still out there. So there will be three in total for the Capital Planning Committee that are closely active. And the second note I want to say is that the zoning bylaw review committee, all seven of them, all eight of them are expiring on June 30th, because that's when the grant expires for technical assistance. So if their appointments were all for one year, I don't think they're going to be done with their work by June 30th. So I have to have a conversation with Bill Amberzino about his preferred approach going forward. I haven't been able to connect with him, so I didn't, I didn't put him on here because I, I didn't want to send it on Signal.
We set a committee for length, did we? Does it go in perpetuity or does it?
They are appointed to, they're all.
They were appointed, but the committee itself should continue.
Yeah, so, so I don't know, so we've talked about, C R B C is going, but we are going to, we're working on a loop and continue to work after this. So that's, that's the idea, and we have more to get in our eyes, so just make the bill, figure it out, figure it out.
Okay. Agenda item number 14, FinCom Reserve Trans.
Hello.
Shoot. Sorry, we missed the vote, Carl. And then, but you want to talk during discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question about the Land Use Committee. There are two at-large members and then three positions that look to be ex officio. Concom, Planning Board, and Select Board. So does this need to be treated differently because you need to have, be on one of those three committees to be appointed?
So three, three at-large and one alternate that are not on those committees. I was assuming it was not the Select Board.
So the terms that are expiring are one member at large, the Conservation Commission representative, the Planning Committee representative, and the Select Board representative.
Okay.
But they're, they are appointed members of the committee.
Okay.
So there will be one at-large position posted on the website for members of the public, and then we'll notify the respective commissions that they should send their recommendation of their representative to the Select Board to be appointed.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Carl.
It's a good question, thanks.
All right, so. Gotta make mistakes in the first night. Let's take a vote on the reappointments. So. Posting, you have it as reappointment. Yeah, posting vacancies, I was directly reading the line.
So the motion's correct to the agenda.
The motion is correct, the agenda item is slightly askew. So. So the motion was said in second, so I'll be looking for everybody's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? All right. And now, number 14, FinCom Reserve Transfers. It's probably like somewhere around 60,000. You want to tell us what those are about?
Yeah, so. Pull them up on the screen, I'll get a little bit bigger here, right? Get a little bit bigger here. So these are the FinCom reserves, transfers, and one, so I'll go through the first one first. Reserve for Negotiation, so that's not from FinCom, but it is a year on transfer and requires the approval of the Select Board and FinCom. That is to fund the Director and Deputy Director of Emergency Management salaries or stipends that the Select Board grants me the authority to go and negotiate individual agreements with, and we did. And that $25,000 is included in the 291 Department Budget for Fiscal 2026 as presented and, and passed. I'm gonna go down through the rest of the ones from FinCom Reserves. So I will say at the end of all of the, so we start with $61,330, and at the end here, we're at $26,630, because that $25,000 comes from somewhere else. So street lighting, actually had a meeting with Endgrid the other day, two days ago, that we're going to be converting to LED lights, they're gonna be at a separate proposal. So cost savings roughly $10,000 a year once the conversion happens, and we will get a $75,000, $79,000 incentive payment from them. And they'll continue to own and operate, own and maintain the poles.
We have to put up a capital, we don't have to have it, or is it?
We do nothing, yep.
Yeah, just give them permission.
Yep. So that, the incentives are run out on December 31st, so they are committed to getting it done this calendar year, so we'll be qualified to get incentives.
Yeah, free equipment and cheaper electricity, you'd say a great win.
So, so the, the question becomes, do you want 3K or 4K in the, you know, lights, like the softer?
Like the wildlife?
Yellow ones.
So I knew that we were gonna have a discussion.
For the brighter, crisper lights.
Yeah.
There are some lights.
You want them cooler or do you want them warmer?
So South, Southboro has them warmer, Dellingham has them, Dellingham and Milford have them crisper, the whiter lights.
I know there are some wildlife impacts of street lights and.
And also this other year, what was like the?
So there are like six or seven floodlights that only come in the 4K version, so we'll have hemmed in there. You can pick and choose different ones, but my inclination was to go with the softer ones as well, but we'll get some material on it.
Okay.
I want them to be purple.
The darker ones.
I drove through some in Virginia and I was telling my wife the backstory on them and she did not care. But it's a very interesting backstory, the purple.
So that, that's street lighting.
Okay.
Water testing, so the next two are in water, the general for the water, so water testing. DEP mandated a number of secondary tests after, after our results at one point, and that was in the budget. Hydrant fees, Hopedale upped their hydrant fees, it's kind of, we're a price taker then. Parks Salary, the Parks Director's step is on July 1. I did not think about that. I did not put that into my calculations when we moved for their polas. And when the, I think when the 25 budget was passed, he. polas. And when the, I think when the 25 budget was passed, he didn't get steps, so it's not contemplated at all in, in either my transfer or earlier. And I also messed up the split of his hours between the couple of departments. So they're gonna be like 1,800 something dollars short. Computer maintenance contracts, this is world band what we do. When we have them do additional services, it's above our base contract rate. It's also, I, wasn't apparent to me where it was budgeted, what we pay OpenGov for our permitting software, our permitting system online. So.
That wasn't all in that 220,000 some odd computer IT budget line?
There, there's, there's not enough there to pay for it, pay for the renewal. So we renewed in April, and it's like, we renewed for one year, so we ended up paying a little bit of a premium. We're gonna go out for an RFP, with an RFP for a new permitting system because 23.
I thought that, that permitting system was part of the whole inspection services when we had them, was entirely.
Um, it's always, it's been paid out, the last three years, it's been paid out of 155, the IT.
So, but are, is, are they our vendor for OpenGov, or we just been paying out of that budget line?
Um, we, we pay OpenGov directly, so it is.
So that's not great, but it's, it's, at some point in time in the budget, it's like, over the years, it was combined into that line, just because it was.
Should it stay there?
That's a very thick line.
Yeah, so, that doesn't really matter. Uh, if you wanna, if you wanna isolate it in inspectional services, and, so it's like $26,000 a year, which is a lot for what we get.
I would say, if we're not surprised if we start on over today, inspection services could actually reach.
I will recheck that, I don't know about that. Um, so we only paid, I only, I short paid the invoice to only pay for April, May, and June, because I didn't want to pay for nine months in fiscal '26 with the fiscal '25 appropriation. So we will pay the rest in fiscal '26. We will go out with an RFP probably near the end of calendar year '25 for a new system, because it, the system's fine, it's just twice as much as other folks are charging for similar products. And then we'll get on a cycle, or we'd have a six-month contract, and then the contract, the number is seven on the seven line, to avoid this. Equipment maintenance, did some server room cleanup, and some other small projects, but there's a deficit in that line, that is world band, it's in 155. The COA van has like, I think like $90 left for fuel for the rest of the year in that line, so put some more into fuel. And miscellaneous expenses, this is the appraiser contract, this is like one of miscellaneous expenses. This is the appraiser contract for the Trask life estate. So signed a contract this week, someone to appraise the market value of rent and the overall market value of the property, so we can do our arithmetic and figure out what the, what we can buy out for. And this vendor has committed, and why I'm doing it on the operating budget here, is this, this vendor has committed to completing by January. So that will give us time to craft everything we need to craft and get a special town meeting appropriation to buy out the life estate, should the life stateholder be, or be interested in something. So that's, that's all of the, all the chances. There will be, I will say, there will likely be another one of these before July 15th as stuff crops up that I don't know about. You know, I tried to project out the big categories, but you know, there might be a one-time fee somewhere that a department head knows about that I don't, that wasn't apparent in the, in my budget review. So that is why the motion, I have two motions suggested, and this is what the board noted last year in our remote meeting, to authorize the chair to sign future transfers for the remainder of the fiscal year.
That's a common practice.
Great.
Now that FinCom already posted their meeting to.
Yes. Uh, Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 27th.
Tomorrow's Thursday.
Your week's moving fast. All right, well, I'd be looking for some motions.
I move to approve the year-end transfers to, to some other department.
Second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? And you were about to say?
I move to authorize the Select Board chair to sign future year-end transfers from Finance Committee reserves for the remainder of fiscal 2025.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Thank you. Wow, this is a fascinating.
Ten year is also a great start.
So number 15, Town Administrator Report.
Great. So next week is the Mass Municipal Management Association, so like the sub of MMA for MMMA. Triple for. I'm just glad, so it's, they say manager, but they don't say administrator. So every time, I, I think it should be the MMMAA, but they don't. So I'm at their annual conference. I'm at their annual conference next Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so I'm not being in the office. Uh, my next item was in the Trask Legislate, so I guess I'm working the appraiser now for STM appropriation. Let's remind everyone, the calculation is you take the, use actuarial tables, take the life expectancy of the life stateholder, take the annual estimated rental payments of the property in the ASIS condition, discount that back to present-day dollars, and then that's, that's kind of the cap of what the town is allowed to pay for the property. What we're also going to get is an appraisal of the property at large, the market value, if it was on the open market. So we can say we're paying this much smaller dollar amount to advance by 20 years, whatever, the town's useful ability to use a property worth, you know, X millions of dollars, because the annual rental number's gonna be quite small in the ASIS state of the property. Old Saltbox Road, the deed has been signed by all interested parties. It has been notarized, it has been sent to council via certified mail earlier today to be filed with the registry.
That's exciting. Thank you for all that long work on that. New interesting skill you picked up.
Can I just, Carl, just as a reminder, we're excited to that. Part of this whole Trask and Saltbox, all of that was off of Powers Road. There were one or two properties, which is, the link with taxes had been for years, and it's never been played, who do the owners own? And it was a recent construction found out there. And it was all part of that property that had been behind it, and then we went into Oakdale. You know, we're out there, Oakdale, and they'll come together there.
Yeah, she's starting to go down.
And there was, and it was, I'd say, recent voting in the last couple of months in Oakdale, where there was an attempt to, to get into that back lane. And then they wanted more Overdale Parkway, and Oakdale's, it was their report, and the town ultimately is, is, now it's all shut down, so they don't have that. So that's gonna stay open space in there.
That land on the other side of Overdale Parkway, on the way to the Oakdale Park, that's always kind of been empty, it's gonna stay.
Okay. The issue is that, again, my memory is, there's a couple of pieces of, a couple of parcels that are in it, but, you know.
Are they landlocked?
No, they, they don't. They may be, but either way, we need to find out. You know, and usually the issue is, you know, if you look at options, you know, because they're on the common line, they're, they may, they may very well belong to another piece, particular in the option of Oakdale.
Okay.
But I know we had, I asked three or four times for the previous principal assessment, and she did not succeed. So maybe we can just kind of make a reminder to, to the current principal assessment to do some research. You know, they're telling me that I'm wrong.
These, these parcels kind of right here, is that 18 or 19? It's hard to see that number.
Yes, so this is, well, the life estate is eight principally, so we're talking about this one right here, where it says "Menden" in big letters. And then this sliver here is nine, I think it's seven, eight, nine, or six, eight, and nine that we're talking about. Old Saltbox Road, the piece that we're just talking about, is 11. So it's this sliver right here that has just been deeded to the town. And then nine Trask is part of the.
And Mike, you're talking about that space right behind it, that parcel, those parcels right behind it.
Powers Road, yeah.
This 10 here.
Yeah, well, it's over down to that next street, right? So.
Sorry, I'm gonna mouse this just a moment. Yep, Powers Road.
Okay, yeah, those two parcels. I just hiked through there actually the other day. Okay. Yeah, those look like they have buildings on them, too.
Interesting. All right, next one. Uh, we had a meeting recently with a lot of stakeholders, organized by Jason Cooter, about 100 years of scouting in Menden, so a November 2026 celebration, trying to figure out, so bringing together public safety, conservation, parks and recreation, myself, everybody can say, here's a way, this could go good or bad. So there's a lot of work to do, a lot of more questions to be asked and answered, but we're off to a really start, and got 18 months to figure out, so I'm excited for that. Sometimes I forget what I've said here versus just said to Elena, but somebody wants, somebody had asked about cow grazing on town land. So, did I say it here? All right, so I'm working on, thank you. I'm working on an RFP for that, so I'll bring it back here, to see, to see if the board wants to issue the RFP. We can always issue the RFP, get responses back, and say this does not comport with our use of the land, and reject all the proposals.
Wouldn't most of the places where we would be grazing cattle already have agreements for hay, and so we have to have those types of discussions?
The parcel question, muddy brook, buffer 16, is, is not. The conservation restriction is held by somebody at Mediacomment Land Trust. So Conservation Commission has said, yes, you can. Went to Mediacomment Land Trust, they said this comports with the conservation restriction, which restricts how many acres for agricultural use. So the RFP will have to say things like, you know, fence an area, how many, how do you get water, what are your insurance for these times, here's what it expends, here's what much you have to pay us, that sort of thing. So either the people applying will say, I can't get that sort of insurance, or I want to graze 50 cows there, and it's like, let's say you can only graze five or whatever. So that's, but this particular piece, it will be actually modeled off of our hay license agreements, the ultimate contract. South Borough has, has one.
It's a moment down the.
That's right.
Sign procedure, we started this conversation between highway police, myself, and have yet to kind of close the loop on that, but I just wanted any folks listening to know that we're, we're moving forward on how people can request signs. It fell off the radar a little bit, so I apologize for that, but hopefully we'll have something in the next couple of weeks. Kinsley Lane, the dirt path, I don't, I hesitate in calling it a road, it's a lane, because it is not laid out as a way. It is a lane that meanders between individual parcels all the way throughout there. So we've always kept it possible for public safety, and now that kind of the winter season, hopefully some of the rainy season after, after tomorrow is, is over, we're gonna be up there patching next week the biggest holes that provide, that are, that make it difficult for our vehicles to pass. I am, I have a list of all the addresses and a list of the owner's addresses for everyone on Kinsley Lane. I'm working with council on exploring what our options may be for improving that road. There is, I'm sure the board's familiar with it, but for sidewalks and water sewer mains, there's a process called abetment, where we do something that improves kind of just your house, you know, owner. So you are, you're essentially charged for the debt related to that until the debt falls off. So we're trying to explore and see if that is possible for, for this piece, and then do all of the legal work to do takings and make it a public, and all of that. So I want to know what our options are. I know what a ballpark cost is, which the highway department is working, highway survey is working on. So I'm gonna send a letter to residents and have kind of a, a public meeting about this, and just let them know what our restrictions as a town are, because we can't expend public resources on private ways. So I.
The, the few that was in the agents, and everybody was worried that I thought they would pay for it, and it was out of the board, you know.
Is this the only, is this the only one that we have that's, that's all private like?
It was Nimmup Drive, it's across from Lee.
Right. So I thought we had another one.
There are private ways, I believe there's a lot of private.
There's a lot of private ways, but they, they don't go between private land and.
Well, another one, I think, is at the corner of Cemetery Street and Providence Road.
Right back to this, this solar farm, right?
Right. As a matter of fact, I'm not entirely certain, but it's almost like, well, the history of it was, it was, it's the end of the railroad history. And then the bridge at the end, Peter Dennis Land, at some point, it washed out, so it was through way before. And then it just became, it was pretty much, came here on one side and riding the other. And riding was insurance company told them that they had a lock, so they had actually put a gate across and locked it. And it wasn't really abandoned, but they were locked it because they were the only, they were the only owners except for the town, because the town owns the Coase Cemetery, which is up in there.
Yeah, there are some really interesting town maps around what you had told me about that I went and looked at the maps. I had also found up at Inman Hill, Inman Hill technically goes all the way over to Providence.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I had no idea. I mean, it doesn't, clearly it doesn't go to Providence, but it's mapped out that way, so there's a right of way through there.
But, but to.
There must be a lot more of them.
But we've had discussions, you know, open, we're open, you know, the Theaster Street on that end, to get back up into this Coase Cemetery. And, and like I mentioned, everybody was worried one time or another, I think we should seriously consider making that the town cemetery. It's peremptory, it already is a cemetery, it's got historical nature, and because the DOT is agreeing to pay for the relocation of that civil monument, but they've got movement while they're doing construction, you know, there's a lot of stakeholders, a lot of people to talk to, but I'm wondering with this multi-million dollar project, if they're willing to relocate it.
To the end of a road that they have to build?
Well, or, right, or if we could relocate it to a burial ground, and get, get the state to take this roadway and help us rehab it, you know, so we wouldn't have to take away our budget, because we can relocate it where we like them to. And I just, I think it's.
Considering that it's coming up in the fall, that whole movement, we would need to get started on that, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure of the relocation timing, they may not have to do it next till the spring, so I'll have to ask. And they're, they're willing to, I think it's within 40 or 50 miles, which means anywhere in Menden will do anything. I, I like the thought, but I, I'm not sure that DOT is gonna build us a road to take the money.
Well, again, like you said, I would say, I don't want them to build us, we're just wanting to improve what exists.
And so that is still laid out as a public way, whereas when you're talking about Nimmup Drive Road.
Right, Nimmup.
Not laid out as, but this, this, there is nothing there, but it is laid out as a public way.
Right.
And your question before about other things that cut through, I, I have not seen that anywhere, so it's the only one. And there are private ways, but these are the only two that are laid out in such a way as that makes.
Are you gonna address Nimmup and Kinsley at the same time, or are we doing that separate?
Kinsley is in worse shape and impacts more people, so that was the first. And I think it's a more difficult knot to untie because of its laid-out nature, so that was, that's where we started.
And the fact that those houses are all the third owners, since that arrangement was, you know, so you've got to be, I don't fully understand what a private means.
Yeah, I had a resident call me, and she said, if I, if I knew it was like this, I never would have bought my house four years ago if I knew it was that.
Yeah, exactly. I, I really feel for that.
Um, so that's, I'm hoping to have those meetings this summer. I already did my DOT number, and I already did my lines report, so that's, mine's still open, so that's all.
Can I, can I just mention about our, our retired former state senator that passed away? You may remember Luba and Ozzy. If you may remember Lou Berenazi, he was ninety-one. And he was, he was a five-term Milford selected member, served his chair three of those terms. Then he became a state rep, I think for five terms, and then he became a state senator. He was above to, you know, the president of the senate. But he wasn't going to retire from state. And he retired. And the last time we saw him here, when he came in here, because he had taken his campaign money, started a foundation, and he gave a award to whichever, yeah, exactly, whichever town in his former district had the highest percentage of registered voters coming up to vote.
Right.
He was a huge proponent of, you know, you know, our former government.
Right.
And, and, you know, voted. But he passed on, on May eighteenth. And is, is actually, the week is tomorrow at, this one, this one is at Consigliere Maggiore, which is on Water Street. And the funeral will be at, at Sacred Heart Church in Milford. But he's a lifelong Milford resident. And I remember when my son Tom was running for office and he went for that, for that seat. And, and Lou came and told him that it was perfect because his wife was from Southbridge, which is one end of the district, that he was from Milford, which was the other end of the district. He's just, he was just a real, just a great person.
Yeah, that sounds like he was a storied civic servant.
Oh, he used to come to the, when I was a cop, he would come to the, to the, the holiday, you know, the Christmas, like dinner that we would do for the senior citizens. And he would ask questions that, you know, like trivia questions. And he was a master at, because he would always, you know, he'd hear somebody say something and he would make them, he'd repeat to exempt you said, and say, wrong. He was just, he is a master. Great, great guy. Lou Berenazi, ninety-one years old. And his wife, I think they were married sixty, married sixty, seven years, I think.
Lots of, lots of accomplishments there.
Yeah. You know, oh, distinguished service boy, he was, you know, when he graduated from high school, he went into, into the Army for public affairs. And then he was a guy who was part of the, you know, public service before he, you know, began his, his professional career as a, as a state guy. But I'm so glad I got to give it.
Thank you, Mike. All right, so future agenda items, we need to, on six four, we're going to do the revised PNS for the denton?
Yeah, we had a final survey and there was material differences in the acreage calculations, so that changed the purchase price and, you know, everybody's kind of scrambling right now. So you had.
Because this was already revised for.
And it needs to be signed, yeah.
Okay.
So, Anne Mazur, as you said before about work that I did on Old Saltbox Road, I coordinated and Mazur did the lion's share of that work and also with the denton property. So she asked to put on six four agenda, so that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Anne, for helping us out yet again. And then affordable housing committee creation?
Yeah, that's, a lot of these, kind of everything on here from here on down is just to keep as a living list, so it doesn't fall off of largely mine and Katie's radar to make sure we get it on the agenda and keep it all on.
And then we will talk, when we're all here, we'll talk about the special permit discussion from the nineteen twenty-six committee, like Jeremy had mentioned, we met earlier this week. I have a few more meetings and people to talk to. I'll be attending the land use committee meeting on June tenth. I think I got that date right, June tenth, to talk to the land use committee about our plans up there. Just to be clear, the select board has, you know, full purview over that property, but, you know, this is a big event, this is a big town, we'll make sure everybody feels like they've contributed and.
Everyone of us is, yeah.
Yeah, because the, the worst thing that can happen is that we, you know, somebody has input and we make a mistake because we didn't hear it, so. Highway road maintenance plan, is, is that what we've, we've been asking the highway surveyor to tell us what his plan is for the upcoming road maintenance for the next, next amount of time?
Yep. So we are, we're doing Hartford Avenue East, depending on, depending on a couple of things, including if the bond bill passes, so chapter ninety, which we paved roads with, there's the formula on how you get money, we get like two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The governor added an additional hundred million dollars to it based on bond bill, only calculated our road mileage, so we would end up with like four hundred and thirty thousand dollars or something like that. That, yeah, has yet to pass, so we don't quite know how much money we should expect to receive. We, you know, we appropriated supplemental money into road repair. We have, you know, you have three budget years to spend chapter ninety, so we have residuals from previous ones. But the plan is pretty much from Netkill Road to the Bellingham Line to Hartford Avenue East. In conjunction with intersection improvements, Plain Street.
Yeah, is that happening?
Yeah, so I, I've called, texted and emailed and have yet to like kind of hear a lot. And so then I talked with the Hopedale Town Administrator and said, hey, if you get in touch with these guys, let me know. And later that day, he responds to the Hopedale Town Administrator and says, I owe Jeremy and Mendon and Hopedale PD a response as well. It's like you, you told the Hopedale Town Administrator that you owe the administration, it's fine with me. So looking like a start in June is what he told the Hopedale Town Administrator.
You mean like in two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, he had told me when they were going to start the end of June, we met, he goes, let's do it, start in April. And we went over to the homeowners and said, you know, you ready for this? And it's been crickets since February. So we have some outreach to do, once we have a date. I, I didn't want to tell the homeowners there on the corner, the Woods family, that, you know, give them false hope or false expectation, not hope, expectation is about to start dating and revise myself a hundred times. So once I know something more, we're going to talk to them. And I'm, you know, there's a couple of ways to approach it, so that's kind of up to the highway surveyor, how we, do we come all the way through and do everything and they pay us some, you know, contribution for taking over or, you know, do we have their guys go out a little bit further or, because what we don't want is scenes right in the middle of the intersection.
Right. Yeah, that's right, but it'll keep up.
So there's, there's a couple of ways to do it. I, I'm hoping that they'll just prep the whole thing, we could come through and then they make some sort of contribution to the town for, you know, the, I don't care about the labor, about the material. Sorry, finish that point.
Yeah.
So then, a- after that, then the plan is that the highway surveyor comes and say, we have, we have this beta study and we paid this extra licensing fee to be able to get in and download and manipulate. What's, what's the plan going forward? What can the town expect? What, how are you thinking about this? And my question is, if the town continues to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars every year, how does that get applied? How does, what, how does that get accelerated? What's, what's the return on investment for the town?
Yeah, exactly.
Library paving, how'd that go?
Thank you for reminding me. So it went great. Go to the library there, the, all the striping happened and signs happened on this past Sunday. We added six additional spots at the back of the library and when I was there on Monday.
And that's like where it goes down a little bit back there?
Like next to the.
Where the church parrels used to be.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Added six additional spots there and there was little T marks that showed they will be marked, but as of Monday, they weren't marked. So Andrew was following up, I get to, library director, Jared, so I have yet to talk with him, but it, I think it looks really good.
Yeah, no more cone in the, in the middle of the opening, yeah.
So I know it was disruptive to have the library closed, but I think it was.
Nah, it's going to be great.
It's perfect.
Okay, can I ask, what's the current plan of the, of the old directory?
So they have an earmark from the state which expires June thirtieth, so they are working, working quite the clip with GRLA, it's an architectural and engineering firm. James Datch and I were just talking about it yesterday, one of the trustees, he's on the subcommittee that's working with that, and he's been impressed by GRLA's work and they will have a report, I don't know any details of it, but they'll have a report before June thirtieth on what their future possibilities are for the rectory.
That's great. Chief, about the fire department?
Yeah, I actually just got an email from Congressman Nakuplas's office about the two federal grants that are available, FPNS and SAFER. So SAFER is the one that the chief had talked about where you can get additional positions paid for by the federal government, but you have, we have to add since about eight positions. So then after the first two years, we run up for that. But the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant Program had an additional thirty-some million dollars added to it this year. The chief, part of his long-term strategy for the, for the department is to put a full-time fire prevention and safety officer on staff. So we've been emailing back and forth a little bit about that, it just came out.
So this is current state, but also will be his roadmap?
Yeah, so he, maybe in September, August of last year, said, don't have to read this right now, but here's my long form version of my vision for the fire department. And it lays out kind of year by year and what he wants to get to staffing wise and, yeah, so I think hearing from, hearing that from him and maybe some staff members as well about the impacts of staffing, Elena and I had the opportunity to meet with a couple of tenants and just, you know, hear the, hear the pressures and the, the difficulties that being on a razor's edge staffing mean to their personal lives.
Yeah.
And it was.
And it's not possible.
There's the burnout, it's not, it's not possible, burnout has happened and I think having the chief talk about the current state and the staffing going forward is, will be useful to the board in advance of budget discussions.
Inventory of land?
It's a much, a much bigger program. We're having outside help with that through planning, so once we have a full-time planner, and this will tie into recreation fields discussion about sanitaries, it'll, it'll tie into.
And Dylan's July one, that's July one thing?
Yep, and I said this during a bunch of discussions, just to remind folks, previously, the IMA was eighteen hours in Oxbridge, sixteen hours in Mendon, six hours in Millville, and took the whole cost of employment, so insurance, retirement, all of it, and divided it proportionally. I told Millville to try to make it budgetarily a little bit easier for us. I had told Millville if they're still interested in those six hours, we can enter it to an IMA just between the two of us. They were going to talk with Oxbridge to see if maybe they wanted to do something and then it was radio silence for a month. So I saw the Millville TA today and I knew I was going to see him today, so I just handed him an IMA and said, if you're more excited, this, we go, here, here you go. So it would be sixteen thousand dollars and Dylan, or the incumbent planner, would work in Millville six hours a week, which really comes down to half a day and then half a day during planning board meetings in additional weeks. So still principally thirty-four hours a week here. Should have put this in my town administrator report. And I saw, I saw the Millville TA because there was a MECC, the Regional Dispatch Group, there was a MECC board meeting today and we signed the agreement to kind of partner with SEMRAC, the Foxborough Eastern Norton and Mansfield Regional Dispatch, to get on the roadmap to combining the two into a new district. There is a million hurdles to get between now and then. The analogy the board keeps using is, we're not getting married, this is us getting engaged. And then, so what the chair also says is.
I'm semi-committed.
What the chair also says is, if you don't figure out the funding formula and this board stuff while we're engaged, by the time we get married, we'll be sleeping in different beds on the first night, which is not what you want. So they beat that analogy to death. But we've signed on moving forward, it is, it is not perfect, it is good and it will get better.
Does anybody have any other future agenda items they want to throw out tonight? As always, you can email Jeremy and Katie and apparently I now.
All right, he, he can hardly, one thing, it's all tied in with this, this water, water grant, water blood grant. It was that piece of land that was in the aquifer valley around Providence Road and we talked about.
Buy the power lines?
Yes.
Yeah.
He agreed, so I know there's supposed to be a buy lot or some kind of a, it was some kind of action that I think the water board was wanting to take, they were going to look at taking, buying some of that land and kind of preserve, because it's worthless.
Yeah, we created that protection over it, but yeah, we did, that was a brief, that was wild that we had that discussion, it was a brief discussion, but.
That could be a good thing there.
Yeah.
As you like to do, the state ends.
I'd say, well, these are protected for easement for testing and all that anyway.
Part of the memory was it was a, it's privately owned land, but it's completely a white land with, you know, the aquifer, right? It's not realable for anything. You know, staying here is hopefully made of town land, preserved, protected.
Yeah, we, there will be some purchases or takings where we need, you need to put a hundred foot buffer around your, around your public water supplies and that kind of goes into the tail end of someone's property who's also similarly landlocked and worthless on its own. So we're in discussions on the value of that.
All right, well, our next two meetings, June fourth and June eighteenth. If you are taking vacation this summer, maybe shoot, shoot those, shoot those days you wouldn't be available for meetings over to Jeremy so that we can get the summer schedule.
I would likely be on vacation the week in between those meetings.
All right, well, item number eleven, I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to a chair.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those against? All right, thank you, everybody, have a great night and we will see you on June fourth. All right?